And then also in the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board, there's a recommendation from CRA manager Valerie Farrell to appoint Christine Gauding to a three-year term beginning December 5, 2022 and ending December 4, 2025 as a Dixieland representative. Ms. Gauding is fulfilling an unexpired term ending on August 2, 2023. Therefore, she's eligible to serve an additional two full terms. And then the third one is a General Employee Pension Board recommendation from Directive Retirement Services, Sherry Watson, to appoint Brendan Hahn to a three-year term beginning December 5, 2022, ending December 4, 2025. Mr. Hahn is fulfilling an unexpired term ending on October 8, 2023. Per Resolution Number 5266, may be reappointed to consecutive terms without limitation.
Now, do you have a couple corrections on the news?
Okay.
Christina Gauding is not filling an unexpired term. This is her own term and her own right. She will serve two terms.
Okay, so this is her first.
This is her first term.
Yes. And then Brendan Hahn is filling an unexpired term, but it ends October 8. So I just got this this morning. We'll make the correction so it's right when you read the minutes Monday.
So do we move for approval?
Of those three?
Of those three?
We'd love it.
Yes. For approval of those three. That's good morning. Okay. In a second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I just would like to say, I know, I've known Daniel Sherrett since probably middle school. We ran cross-country and track together and have done some business together. So he'll be very good at that spot.
We won't hold it against him.
No, no, no. But it's on the record, so.
Okay.
It is, in a, I'll make a comment generally speaking. It always is so encouraging to me that we have people who want to volunteer to serve these roles. And it's sometimes interesting to me that when we talk to people who want to be involved in these, they'll say, now, what does that pay? A lot of altruistic value is that pay. And that people serve in that on a volunteering basis. And so I'm grateful.
Yes, and Christine, obviously, we know has been very involved with peace and really working for affordable housing. And I think it will be fun for her to be able to see behind the scenes with CRA, how they've been working with developers to try to incorporate more affordable housing. So we have a motion and a second. And without any more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. And for information only, the 2022 Civil Service Board election and the 2022 General Employee Pension Board election are complete. Barbara Jordan was elected to the Civil Service Board, unopposed, and Rupeen Gray was elected to the General Employee Pension Board, unopposed. I also just want to mention some of the vacancies on Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. They are still looking for two members, one who is an employer within the jurisdiction and one who is engaged in residential home industry. On the Community Redevelopment Area Advisory Board, of course, we just got Christine, but we're still looking for two more members, one who owns property in a business or works in the Dixieland CRA district and one in the Midtown CRA district. And the Historic Preservation Board is looking for two members. So that concludes my, everything I have to say. Is there any other business?
None for me.
Is Sound Lake Morton considered in the Dixieland CRA or no?
No.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Okay, our meeting's adjourned, and we will begin at 8:30 to go through the agenda study. We want to really, in fact-- For the road diet, and we will have lunch provided for commissioners during that as well. And so we're grateful for those accommodations. Therefore, on the agenda study side, I mentioned this earlier when we didn't have everyone here. We want to try and do as much funneling today and as little presentation that we can save until Monday as possible. So I think that'll help move us through quickly. We start on Monday at 9 o'clock, and we will have our City Maker Award, which we're looking forward to be able to get done. And then Bill Cohen will do the beautification awards. And then we're going to have a Pearl Harbor remembered. Staying Keith Mar is going to be here and share a little bit of singing in that regard, or prose, however he ends up doing it in that as well. And Gary Clark and the DAA are going to be here as well. Sherry, is that right?
Jay Lenora?
No, not Jay Lenora, so maybe it is. I don't have it with me, but it's another person's making us sound DAA. Then we have the consent agenda to review. And on the commission, I mean, on the notes, you'll see that we have Item C1 as one of those items beyond the minutes. And so we'd like to take a look at that Bolton Partners.
Got that one, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. This is a consulting agreement with Bolton Partners. This is for the wage and benefits study that we've been discussing for some time. This will be something we've engaged in to ensure that our non-union employees, this applies only to non-union employees, are paid a fair market share. We went out for an RFP. We received a number of proposals from various consultants. Upon the selection committee, upon evaluation, they have selected Bolton Partners. Bolton Partners was not the lowest cost proposal submitted. You'll see there are two other proposals that were lower in price. The lowest in price was Cody &amp; Associates. However, Cody &amp; Associates didn't have the detail and the breadth of experience when the selection committee did the evaluation. And then the next lowest was Gallagher Benefit Services that came in at $80,200. And they were also, upon evaluation, unable to, they were, the selection committee determined that they didn't have the flexibility necessary to evaluate the city's general fund and enterprise fund benchmarking. And one of the important points to take away from Bolton Partners is while originally we were going to do 90 job classifications under evaluation, Bolton has extended that to all the employee classifications for the city, as well as provide a benefit in retirement benchmarking for the same proposed cost, which comes in at $89,000. The study will take a period of nine months. If there is a required extension of that agreement, we can renew that upon the initial agreement for an additional six months. And the cost of the study is included in HR's FY 2023 budget. I know Mark Farrington's here and can drill a little bit deeper if you have any questions with regard to specifics of what the study will entail.
All right, now, since this would be consent, are there any questions that you'd like to have exploding at this point? Comments? All right. You want to leave that on consent? All right, so we'll leave that on. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us back to the requests appear from the general public. We have none, and then we will have an equalization hearing board, and we have public hearings, and it's A1, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, if I may--
Oh, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry. I just want to make a point for clarification for some of the public who I know are listening. There was some confusion over the last few days about requests to appear versus public comment during an agenda item. And so for those who are listening, I just want them to know that when we get to the item on the agenda, as I described in the email, the mayor will ask for public comment, and they will have an opportunity to speak to those items on the agenda at that time. That's different than a request to appear at the beginning of the meeting. So just for the public who's listening.
As an amplification of that, there's three times to speak. So if these requests to appear for a, from the general public, need to be topical, some issue that somebody wants in advance that gets approved, and that is always done through the city manager's office. The items that we discuss, before we ever vote, we always have the opportunity for the public to be able to respond. And then they can do that, and based on the numbers of people, we keep that at either three to five minutes. And then at the end of every meeting, there can be audience participation on any topic that anybody wants. So we have three windows always for communication. Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate that very much. A1, you are now on, sir.
Okay, 3A1 and 3A2 are both related to the Woodwood land use and zoning. A1 is the comp plan amendment linked to that, and A2 is the related zoning. In order to get to the zoning, you need to adopt the comp plan amendment because the zoning has to be consistent with the conference plan designations. And it would not be if you adopt the conference plan ordinance at A1. Chuck Barbie gave a pretty extensive presentation at the last agenda study. That is available by video. We can either revert to that or have another presentation this morning.
We revert to that, sir. All right. Two.
That's A1 and A2. B1 is one of three ordinances that are on the agenda related to an office, proposed office project in the Parkway Corporate Center. Theresa, do you have a map or something you can show us where this is? These are, the A1 or B1 is the annexation.
Mr. Barbie is--
Okay, there he is. I didn't know he's behind there. So A1 is the annexation, dropping down to the city attorney's portion of the agenda. And the annexation requires two public hearings. That's why that's under B1 there. And then under city attorney, 6A1 and 6A2 are the comp plan amendment and the related zoning for that.
Just going through. So the property in question is just over 11 acres on the west side of Pippen Creek Road adjacent to Parkhead Corporate Center in southwest Lakeland. General area of the, does the map. And so as Mr. Davis said, the proposal is not only annexation, but also assigning a land use and a zoning, a PUD zoning category to the project as well. It's immediately adjacent to Parkhead Corporate Center, and in fact, ends up sharing some of its stormwater management system with Parkhead Corporate Center. And so there's an opportunity here to transition from that use to the residential that you see basically surrounding the other three sides of the site. The proposal is to allow for 22,800 square feet of office, which could be general office or medical office. During the planning and zoning board process, we had heard some concerns about the location of a dumpster enclosure that was previously shown at the north end of the site, closer to the homes located in the county immediately north of the subject property. Since then, the applicant has relocated that dumpster enclosure further south, internal to the site. I also received a call from a resident over in Lakeside Preserve concerned about the views looking southwest from their development. And as we'll see in the conditions in a few minutes, is that the Southwest Sector Plan that was developed back in 2008 designates Pippen Creek Road as a canopy road. So the intent is to preserve as much of the character of that roadway as possible. And so the buffering requirements along the frontage there of Pippen Creek Road will address a lot of those comments. So we've got some photos looking across. This is from Heritage Baptist Church looking directly west in towards the site. And the properties that exist today. An already existing concrete pad on site. Again, the layout plan. And so really, in terms of the conditions, again, it would be office uses, medical and non-medical, 22,800 square feet. Development standards would be in consistent with the I-2 suburban context for this property with the binding site plan that was shown previously. Landscaping and buffering would be in accordance with the Land Development Code, but the existing matured trees along the northern property line would be preserved, as well as the matured trees along the Pippen Creek frontage. We put a caveat in there, as we do in most of these types of cases, that, you know, subject to review by our city arborist with the Parks and Recreation Department. If there are trees that do need to be removed because of condition or species, if there's another problem, that would override those conditions as they are writ. And again, signage would be in compliance with the code. Outdoor lighting, storage, same. The outdoor storage permanent materials machinery would be prohibited. So the intent is to, again, have a true office-type development. Transportation, you know, binding concurrency determinations would be made with each site plan submitted. Sidewalk would be required to be reinforced, as well as connectivity into each office building. And then we would require bike parking and an annexation petition into the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District.
What is an abrogation easement?
Abrogation easement is something that really is intended to protect the city because of the proximity to the airport. And so pretty much anything in this area, we have a standard requirement now that requires navigation easement based on a boilerplate developed by the city attorney's office. And what that does is just lets folks know that there is an airport, it's an active airport, and the city has a right to operate that airport.
It's recorded in the poll records. When the merger's done, that's flagged. It's also on the plat. So it's just to, just to provide notice to any prospective owners or in that area.
Figure deal with residential.
Sure, then would be an office, right? Okay, questions on that? Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Chuck. Could you go back to the lighting piece? This is just for my own. I know I've had folks talk about dark sky lighting and different lighting. Does this constitute that? Or is this, I mean, are there levels of the shape, fully shielded type of lighting that doesn't emit the--
This isn't, doesn't quite get to the dark sky standards, but it is intended to avoid light trespass to adjacent, particularly residential properties. And so it's more of a shoebox-type structure that would direct the light inward. Tricking down with LEDs, that's a little bit easier to do, but it's not quite to the dark sky standards that we find in other places where they're even more restrictive in terms of the overall light that's allowed to begin with.
Yeah. And then, so as far as, like, where do we require, like, do we have levels of what we require for lighting? I mean, is this only required in this particular area?
This is really pretty much standard in the Land Development Code. So it's just, in this instance, it's more of a reminder that with the residential nearby, that we're going to be adhering to those standards. And so it just reinforces what's already required in the code.
It's more of a trespassing standard than a pollution standard.
Okay, thank you. That helps me.
Yeah, that's a good way to say that. Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I was not tickled at first about having, you know, 11 acres surrounded by residential, you know, to become commercial. But, you know, as I read into it more and looked through, and I attend the church right across the street, and I think that because of some of the issues we've had with the airport, with all of the, not the airport, with the traffic complaints and things like that, it certainly makes sense to have--
It's commercial--
Because I will tell you, I mean, we are literally right over, you know, right over that. And, you know, during Sun 'n Fun and the Amazon flights, it's certainly, we can hear it. So I've come around to, you know, looking at that as probably the best option and use for that spot as opposed to, you know, the residential side, so.
Good comments. Any others? All right. No other questions. Let's continue on to City Manager, 5A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items of presentation. First item that I have is regarding a recommendation to Encore Broadcast Equipment Sales for upgrading the broadcast equipment. The City of Lakeland's Communication Department and the Purchasing Division recommend the award of RFP Number 2097 for the broadcast equipment upgrades that will be in the City Commission Chambers, again, to Encore Broadcast Equipment. The equipment that's in there today dates back to 1993. And so you can imagine with the way technology advances, how old that is, and staff has done a tremendous job over the years, you know, keeping that patched together and operating. But it's time to change that. The project includes major equipment replacement for a video switching and delivery system and audio upgrade. And the system allows for a single operator. So it's a one-person operation, and that one person can do many things, including, you know, providing for the closed captioning and operating the cameras and other things through this equipment. Encore Broadcast Equipment Sales out of Tampa quoted at $224,984.36. They are providing a system that most accurately matches the needs described in the RFP and came in under the allocated budget for the project. So if you look at the bids there, there's some discrepancy between the three. But as stated, it is coming in under budget. And when you look at the scope of what is provided, staff has reviewed that and are recommending that we award to Encore Broadcast. The award of the RFP for the broadcast system upgrade to the City Commission Chambers and AV Control Room is the recommendation of staff. And again, that would be in the amount of $224,284.36.
I have a question. First of all, having spent a lot of time in the AV side, there almost is always some next thing, another level of being able to do something. What are, where do we maybe stop in this proposal? That the next thing we might have considered won't be done? we might have considered won't be done and the timing zots on whatever that may be? And I don't know what I'm asking other than how do you layer in sophistication technologically?
And that is a great question for Andrew, who will be that single operator that we talked about. Andrew was heavily involved in this process and he's the most knowledgeable person we have on staff, along with Kevin, of course. And so unfortunately Andrew's not here. I knew Kevin would not be here first thing this morning, but we can get that question answered for you on Monday, Mr. Mayor. I do not have the technical understanding.
There he is, right on time. I figured he might be.
I don't know who's directing right now, so. Your question is what's the next level? So we're upgrading to full high definition. The next level would be the discussion system for the commission. Sorry, I'm also have a cold summer.
That's right. Half the room does.
A discussion system for the commission, digital voting. I've spoken with Kelly about that, but that's a system that would be an upgrade over and above, you know, what we're doing now, which is primarily going to be on the video side of things.
And that could be an additional increment adding?
It could be an additional. We are upgrading audio right now with part of what's in there. And so that upgrade would be somewhat replaced if one day we move to a full digital discussion system that would allow Kelly to perhaps record votes digitally and have an interface that's, that's there on your, on your dais. We're not moving to 4K even though some of the cameras are available to do, that the cameras will be 4K, but we're not moving to a 4K digital editing system or switching system. Again, it's, it's still a little cost prohibitive and we, we would need the capability to stream and have viewers be able to watch in 4K and that's still a little ways off. But you know, for the, the bid has, has really given us a whole lot of necessary items in a, in a nice package that I'm glad that we're gonna be, gonna be getting.
So you, you wouldn't feel like, oh, we should be doing this at the same time on something that's hanging?
You know, there's, there's always that next level. If you, I'll say it this way, if you gave me $500,000, I'd, I'd spend it.
That's okay.
That's not what I meant. I can attest to that. He would spend it. And I do think that is important, important. Again, as I mentioned, this is coming in under budget. Some of those upgrades and things that can be added in the future, we would need to budget for and certainly would have that opportunity. And, and I will tell you, that was not easy because this has taken some time and with the supply chain issues that everyone is, is aware of, all of the costs come in higher than initially, you know, had been anticipated, but yet we still were able to accomplish it and come in at budget.
If I may say one more thing, which is just, as you mentioned, the upgrade, some of the equipment has only been, is still there from 93. So I think the best consideration is not to change what we're doing now, but just to keep it in consideration that we want to keep our technology as current as possible. So having, having the opportunity to continue those upgrades sometime for 2050 would probably be not another however long it was between 93. So thank you for the question.
And under buddy. Thank you. And I love an under buddy. Well, and I really ask.
Andrew.
Andrew, come back. You can't hear yourself.
He needs to switch the camera to you in the neighborhood.
If I could all just stand on the camera that I left it on.
You kind of touched on this, but just trying to understand, are there, in addition to bringing the technology up to current standards, are there new capabilities, functionalities that we will see or people watching will notice as a result of this?
That is a nice question. You know, when, when people are watching, they, they should notice a higher video quality. The funny thing is that right now, the way that, the way this system's put together, it is, as Sean mentioned, it's kind of patchwork. And so when people are watching, they may not be able to tell a difference because a lot of what we're doing is, is patching up those things behind the scenes. So besides video quality and, and, well, you know, let me, let me scratch that, they are gonna be able to tell the difference because we're upgrading audio. And that's, that's gonna be, I think, a really big deal. Right now, everyone has two microphones. We're, we're gonna be moving that to a single microphone, which, which has to do with phase cancellation and some other fun audio terms that, that just means that, that people have a difficult time hearing you. So, so that'll be, that'll be a nice change. The, the other upgrades that we're making are, sorry, from a delivery standpoint, trying to make sure that those who are watching at home always know, have a single source where they can go to. They're not, they're not confused about whether on Facebook or Vimeo or wherever it is. But that'll, that'll be something that will be aided by, by what we're creating here.
Excellent. Any other questions for you? Yeah, and I think, I think it tags along with what you were asking, but are the actual components that we're buying upgradable or does upgrade mean remove and replace as we upgrade?
We're removing a lot of, oh, so.
With the newer stuff that we're buying?
With the newer stuff.
Two, three, you know?
The, a lot of it would, would need to be removed and replaced again. So these are, these are proprietary systems that are, that are not, some of them are upgradable. A few of them, we can put more pieces into, but a lot of them, you, you buy what you can afford and then if you want something else later, then you replace it.
Go to the next level.
You go to the next level.
Okay, thank you.
But this, in your mind, would be good for another five to eight years?
Oh goodness, yes. Yes, that, that's been the whole goal. And that's why it's taken so long to create this is, is because I wanted to make sure that we're not just putting a stopgap, but we really are creating. And, and because of that, part of what's in the bid is not just a, a technology change, but it's, it's an infrastructure change in that office, which is one of the reasons why that window is gone, is because the whole office is being redone so that we can create a, a space so that in the future, at least the space is ready, that the building blocks of what we would need to, to do in the future is ready.
Commissioner McCollum.
And just to that point, just when I came on in 19, a meeting with Mr. Mustard and seeing, I mean, he was genius at making what little we had and little investment we have kind of stretch a long way, but it is completely band-aided and, you know, it, it is a patchwork. Well, so I think, you know, just taking an investment that we haven't done this sizable of an investment in however long is really, really important, especially in today's. It's nice to come into the 21st century. That's exciting. Because we're 20 years in.
And the reason I asked the question is because sometimes we don't ask that one last question and there's, then this later comes in for $100,000 later.
Later, yeah, next year.
And, and maybe if we did it same time. So you're good.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your explanation, sir.
Please vote yes.
And your campaign.
And good money. That's a good money.
I'd be always asked for the order, you know?
Okay, the, the next item is another recommendation regarding the award of a bid, 2273 to Sherwood Tennis Courts for resurfacing. And these would be a resurfacing project at the City of Lakeland Kelly Recreation Complex. We, we did have three bids that were received. This award would go to the lowest bidder and this is a very good bid at $76,974 where the next closest bid was $113,500. Staff from the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts and purchasing reviewed the bids and confirmed that the scope of work complies with the project requirements and funding for this will be covered in the already budgeted FY23 Recreation Operating and Maintenance Budget. And so we'll be recommending the award of bid number 2273 to Sherwood Tennis Court for the resurfacing project at Lakeland Kelly Recreation.
Questions on that? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Sean, is this courts, is this, this gonna be painting or is it gonna be some, what's this involved actually? Because it's gonna be blue, green, red, what color?
I don't know the color, but it, it is resurfacing. It's not just repainting. And Pam is here.
Yes, it is repairing the cracks and repainting and the colors will match the existing colors because we're not doing all of the courts. We're just doing a portion of the courts.
Do you know how many we're doing?
Three? Five? Okay.
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah, fine. Yes, for sure.
How long would, would do these last, like the repairs, the upgrades, the resurfacing?
Well, I knew that's probably last 27 years and we're beyond that for a lot of the courts. We do a lot of resurfacing with narpile cloth, fiberglass and crack repair. It's called rightway. So we get about five to seven years out of those. We got a lot of courts, so we, and it also depends on the weather, the ground underneath.
Have the play action and things like that.
Limestone underneath, so. And it costs a lot to do a full relay, completely wipe it out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do a game of my trip.
Hey, do we have any Rubik's Cube courts out there?
We do not.
And Commissioner Reed, what is a Rubik's Cube court?
It's like replay. Play basically.
Play I can do. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, item C.
Okay, the next item, a recommendation related to the Macintosh reciprocating engine project known as MREP, and I will refer to that for the rest of the presentation as the project. This is for builder's risk insurance coverage. The builder's risk coverage will protect the construction and assets on site for the project as the plant construction advances and the value of the liability to the City of Lakeland continues to increase. This coverage will be appropriate to carry us through the construction, the assembly and the testing phases of the project until such time that the unit becomes commercially available. And at that time, they will then be transferred over to our utility, property and boiler machinery insurance policies. We did consider having onsite contractors provide this builder's risk insurance and, and that is, is typical of our process. There are two major contractors on the site and there will be multiple assets that will be delivered each month. And so when staff took a look at that, it was most economical and less complicated to manage for staff and the city to carry the builder's risk insurance. Additionally, when, when looking out in the market, we will get an improved rate and it will help us maintain continuity throughout the project. Had we gone with, with the contractor providing that, there are a couple of things that then increase our costs, which pass through to us, and that would be that the contractor would have to pay tax on that and the city does not have to do that. And then in addition, you know, should we have a federally declared emergency that should occur and create damage? The city could, could apply for reimbursement through FEMA to where a contractor could not. So there's also an advantage to that. While this was not initially budgeted into the project, our current cash flow projections for this project do indicate that there is sufficient funding to be able to absorb and support the premium for the builder's risk coverage. The, the carriers, there will be multiple providers that are a part of the coverage or each of them have a part in the coverage. And the not to exceed premium for the builder's risk policy would be $856,108 and would be in effect from November 30th, 2022 through May 2024. And so the recommendation would be that the commission authorized the city officials to bind the builder's risk coverage for the period that was stated and for the not to exceed premium that was presented.
Commissioner Music.
A couple of things. One, this is something that we don't have budgeted, but it was something we were aware of. We were just not sure which way we were going to pay for it. Is that correct?
Well, again, in, in, most of our projects that are to this, which are rare, the, the contractors may provide them.
Right, so one way or the other, we were paying for it. We just weren't sure. And then the second thing is we're, after approval, we're getting insurance that's going to cover us for a period that has already passed? How does that work? That's like getting homeowner's insurance after, I mean, you said it'd be effective November 30th, right? But we're already past that. They're gonna insure us for something, a date previous?
Probably not. You know, as soon as we get the final quote from the fifth carrier that we, they were marketing, we would be able to bind it at that point.
Okay, that might be January 1st.
It's been a work in progress.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. That was just.
It won't be January 1st. It'll probably be within the next week is what we're looking at, yes.
Okay, all right then. I like this from the standpoint of it is you don't point to each other and that you are responsible for some event that occurs. And I'm not suggesting our May 2024 window isn't long enough because I would hope that everything is good and that. What if we had some cataclysmic events and we need to go beyond May 24?
There are options to extend, probably somewhat limited, you know, to 30 to 16 days. I think we had the same situation with MGT2. When we were going through the testing phase, sometimes they have to go back and retest. So, you know, that may be something that could happen, but we'll be in contact with the brokers and the market for the coverage to make sure that we...
What is the event that turns this off?
When it goes commercial. When the unit goes commercial and live, then we roll it from builder's risk onto our property and boiler machinery.
And that date we guess that might could be is?
By April 24.
That's close. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
How long are they gonna be doing, how long are they gonna be doing the piling?
I'll probably like another week and a half.
Wonderful. I think they start at about 8 o'clock, 7:30 in the morning.
Always. It's not, it's not a consistent beat.
What's that, what's that banging?
You've been up for three hours since then. It's just a reminder, you should be up. And that's the most dense piling project you have on any platform anywhere, is it?
Yes.
How, how close together are they?
About four or five feet.
Wow, four or five feet?
Especially on the, on the foundations where the, where the generators are.
And how deep, how long?
About, they're 80 footers, so they go down 70 feet approximately, then we cut them off.
Four to five feet apart. Think of that.
And they just, yeah, and we still got about 100 more to go. We're doing 10 or 15 a day.
Amazing.
You're starting that man.
This sounds like your normal.
I'm about that close.
Okay.
It's vibrating the whole power plant.
Any other questions on this? Just, that just is the picture of how heavy these units are. 380,000 a piece.
Oh, they're giant, yeah.
Yeah. 380,000 pounds a piece. Okay. This is gonna be such a wonderful, flexible way to provide service. I'm so excited for its implementation. Anything else from you, sir?
No, sir.
All right, that brings us into City Attorney, A1.
Okay, A1 and A2 are both related to the office project and Parkway Corporate Center. So that takes us to 6A3, which is something we have to do every year. The state law requires that we have a capital improvements element in the comp plan, which has to mirror essentially the, the current fiscal year budget. And since we've now adopted a new budget for this fiscal year, we now have to follow up with an amendment to the conference plan so that they're consistent with one another. So it's just kind of a house item. Number four is ratifying an annexation by the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. And Chuck has, I believe, already pulled up the property. This is involved here.
Exactly. This is, this is, this is very close to the office project we were talking about earlier, but it's Lot 10 in Parkway Corporate Center. There we go. It's scheduled for about 150,000 square foot warehouse distribution center. And so as part of our concurrency review and our site plan review process, they're required to submit a petition to the transit district. That was approved back in November, and so this is ratification of that, of that annexation. Once it's ratified, then everything goes back to the citrus connection and they send it to the property manager's office to get off the tax rolls.
Questions?
All right, so now we're at resolutions. The first one is just the lost cleaning clearing resolution. The second item is authorizing a local agency programmer group with FDOT. They're gonna be providing us a grant for the design of the Chase Street Trail Project. That is a approximately 0.87 mile pedestrian bicycle trail. Brian, did you have a map of that?
Yeah, Chuck's, Chuck's, I bought one on it.
And there's a map at the end of the item as well. But this essentially runs along just to the west of the May Manor Mobile Home Park and then it goes to the entrance to Bonnet Springs Park. So it'll help people get to the mark in that area. So the red line there is, is the proposed trail.
That's just connectivity with the trails that we have under development or in place around the Bonnet Springs Park area.
So the DOT is going to be providing us $65,000 for the design of this trail. There's gonna be another $270,000 for the design of it. So this is all just related to the design of the trail system. And then we anticipate, DOT has indicated they're gonna provide us another grant for the construction phase of the project. So that'll be coming in a separate degree. for the construction phase of the project, so that will be coming in a separate agreement with the DOT.
Okay, questions on this one? Yes. Is it just an asphalt path?
Yeah, that's correct. It'd be a 10-foot wide asphalt path. About 1,300 of the... It's about 4,600 lineal feet long, about nine tenths of a mile. 1,300 feet of it, there's improved roadway within Chase Street right away. The rest of it is unimproved right away corridor that we're going to put a trail in.
And how far would that be, say, off of the road?
Off the road is probably six, seven feet, but the remaining, the majority of the trail is in like a 50, 60-foot wide, unimproved right away. So it's going to be green.
That's nice, yeah.
You know, 25, 30 feet each side.
Cool. Brian, what's the difference between 10 and 12 feet? Why do you make a decision on that?
Right away. Most of the time it comes down to right away. The great majority of the time, we're trying to put trails adjacent to or parallel to existing roadway facilities, and there's right away constraints. So 10-foot is kind of the minimum you want to target for a multi-use trail where you can have pedestrians and bicycles. If we were like Sun Trail or something like that, it would be a 12-foot trail.
Okay. Commissioner Man.
So isn't there a path back there? This is on New Tampa Highway.
Hey, Chuck, go like two more slides. There you go. Where at?
So like on New Tampa Highway, like where, oh gosh, what is the red top? Red top is and that kind of thing.
Oh.
Behind that, like through a neighborhood, there's a path back there, isn't there?
Much further west.
Yes, way, yes, way, way west.
Much further west, okay.
Yeah, because that's Bonnet Springs right there on the right. The radio station and the... This is Vicidra's Connection.
Okay, and how far does it go west?
Goes to Strain Boulevard, so it doesn't quite go to Wabash.
Okay.
The Wabash Chappeling Center is right here. There's a big drainage ditch that runs towards Wabash that we would need to cross in a...
I think I'm still talking about, like on Lake Bonnet, there's houses, right? Isn't that houses right there on that lake?
Yes, it's called Villas at Lake Bonnet, and they actually encroach into that right away.
Yeah, and they have a path, right? Isn't there a path back there? I'm just going to go back.
If they do have something, it's... There may be a footpath back there. I know there's a little bit of gray change.
I believe there's some sidewalk areas. I don't think there's a footpath. They actually encroach into that right away, but the city has an agreement with them should we ever need to utilize a right away for any improvements that they'll relocate. We'll see how that goes.
So this one, this is up close to the road.
And keeps it straight.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a housing authority community?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, next.
All right, the next item is a technical amendment to the adoption agreement that the city enacted for its 457B plan. I know Sherry is here and can explain exactly what we're doing here. I'll turn over the users.
Okay, so when we converted from TIAA to Voya two years ago?
Yes.
We redid the adoption agreement and any of the documents pertaining to that based upon Voya. When we did that, there were a couple little errors in there. We reviewed all the documents. Of course, it took us this long to go through the whole thing with our attorney, our deferred comp attorney, and there were just two little typos in it. Not really typos, but just errors. For one thing, all part-timers, they contribute to the FICA, which is the Social Security Alternative Account that we have, and we actually had that the employee was contributing the full 7.5%. The city puts in 1.5%, the employee puts in 6%, so we've corrected that. The other item was for part-time people. If you're a regular part-timer, you can contribute to your 457 plan. We have a couple commissioners that do that. However, the adoption agreement just said all part-timers cannot contribute to the 457 plan in any other capacity but FICA. Well, we had to correct that because part-time, regular people can make contributions into the 457 plan as well as getting the FICA account. But if you're a temporary part-time person, you cannot make extra contributions into your 457. So we just clarified that. Those were just two little items on the adoption agreement that we're just clarifying with the attorney's approval.
I think it's important to note that this doesn't change the practice at all. Nobody will notice a change here. This is simply check-in boxes on...
Because we do it already. It's just we didn't realize that the new adoption agreement had changed that item, and so we had to correct it. And according to our attorney, the IRS just wants to make sure we corrected it before year end, so that's what we did.
Should we put that on consent?
It's a resolution, so we have to...
Oh, okay, because resolution, got it. All right. Any other questions?
That's what I was checking. I thought I had that number delivered yet.
Entire.
All right, and that takes us to item C2.
Yes, this is an agreement with Compete Technologies. This is for cyber security services to protect the city's assets, assets, as well as manage our, the city's overall cyber security risks. This agreement would provide for the hardware, the licensing, maintenance, support, and implementation for IT to manage the security risks. The agreement is being based off the federal government's GSA contract. The term of the agreement, it's a five-year agreement. The total cost is $475,074.54. IT has a budget, has budgeted $250,074.54 in its FY23 budget, and then the remaining $225,000, we're asking the commission to authorize an appropriation and increase in estimated revenues from the self-insurance fund to fund that $225,000 portion. And it's also important to note that being able to approve this agreement prior to year end is almost a savings of about 50%, which would be almost 50% more if we were to go into next year for approval of these services. So the way this came about is our current provider is up for renewal, and IT went out and got some quotes and looked and really found that Compique was able to provide the services and at a better price. And I know we've got our Assistant IT Director, Phil Lambert, here too, who can answer any questions you may have.
So do we compromise anything?
We do not. We actually approve our posture versus reducing the posture.
It's pretty easy. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, just on that note, where we are now and the capabilities that this gives, is this a big step up in terms of what we're adding, or is it just, hey, we need some additional enhancements with growing threats and things that are out there?
Let me use the word revolutionary. We are significantly making an improvement in areas that have been historically gaps. So it is going to help the city significantly.
Without remark, I need you 20 minutes to log in.
Sean, did you have a... You look like you were about to say something.
Well, I mean, I just was going to wait and add. I mean, we have done some reorganizing in IT, and that has allowed us a deeper focus. And then bringing Phil, he has an extensive background in cybersecurity and from the school board.
County.
From the county, I'm sorry, from Polk County. And so it's given us some capabilities that have allowed us to make sure we're hardened to the level that we need to be.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner McCarty.
What other municipalities and governments does Compique work with?
They are working currently with Polk County in two divisions, the county itself and as well as their public, or not public, say, either public services, the water area. They also have an agreement and are providing services to the school board, and I believe it's Orange County, but it could be Osceola. And then they also have an agreement with Sarasota that they're providing services for.
So did we look at like FTI Consulting or any other cyber security entities, or is this the only one we really looked at?
We currently have an agreement with Optive, so we did look at them because they were the incumbent, and then because of my experience at the county and knowing that this entity, we looked at them as well.
When you use the word revolutionary, does that mean we have some vulnerabilities?
No. No. Not that we want to talk about.
All right, very good. I don't want to bring anything up either. Okay, so any other questions?
One more. Are we going to RFP this out in the future to other entities, or are we just... It just seems like a growing industry of consultants, and I just, I don't want it to be as limited, you know, we need to look beyond. I love our Polk County partners, but what's going on in other areas and other states and at a federal level, and what type of consulting are they using? Just because it changes, I would think continually.
It does indeed change continually. This particular engagement is for five years, but as we would approach renewal, yes, we would absolutely be looking at the industry and who is the market leader at that time.
And we feel confident for five years? That's a long time.
Commissioner, we also have the ability to terminate within 60 days, so we can try to build that into an agreement as well, if there's any issues. So we have that option in the contract as well.
Thank you.
And there's probably some comfort from your standpoint. Which is important.
Much better.
Commissioner Man.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and would consultants' usage of like Checkpoint versus another solution make any difference? I mean, is it this consultant that we're talking about, or is it the Checkpoint that's revolutionary?
It's the technology that's being integrated or implemented, and it's, the name is Checkpoint, or the vendor's Checkpoint.
Yeah, I mean, Checkpoint is the thing. I mean, I know that we can talk about the different consultants, but...
And just so you're aware, Checkpoint is an upper right-hand quadrant for gardener if you are a gardener supporter. So they are an industry leader in the space.
Well, it's an area that is all out of our realm, you know, and so certainly we want to be as hardened as you want us to be, and this is not an area that is fun to have to go backwards in. So any other questions? Sam? All right, just checking the eyes. All right, then next.
The next item is an agreement with General Caulking and Coatings Company. They will perform caulking and coating services for the Lake Electric Administration Building. If you look over at that building, you'll see that their windows have a steel frame that support them, and wherever those steel frame connects to the window, there's caulking. That's probably over 15 years old and has been subject to the weather, so it's a needed replacement. So that's the main thing that this contract will accomplish. We put this out to bid, and General Caulking and Coatings was the only company that responded, and they're proposing to do the building for $383,475. I know we have facilities maintenance staff here if you have any technical questions about that.
We've just been doing some of this on City Hall, correct?
Yes, sir.
And who did that work? Is that us?
It was not us.
No, it was a different approach as well. I mean, right now, we're dealing with replacing of the sealant between the frame and the windows and the windows and the structures, so it's quite a bit of a different approach.
In City Hall, it was weep holes. We had weep holes around the windows, and that's what was leaking.
Got it.
And that's hurricane, so we're just sealing some of those weep holes and trying to figure out the best approach to stop water intrusion into this building.
Yeah, and a lot of that was actually done by our facility maintenance staff, which is completely different approach, as I said.
And this does all of the, all floors?
Yes, it's going to be the entire, the north and the south side, yes, pretty extensive.
Yes. Commissioner Music.
Is it a removement of, removing of existing sealant caulking and then reapplying, or is it an overlay?
No, it's going to be a removal.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
That is significant.
Yes.
Any other questions? This is budgeted in that improvements plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The last item is under utility, and we do have a utility committee meeting, so I think we're asking that you just defer that until 11 o'clock. Will you be on that?
Because they have to hear it anyway.
Right.
Okay, great. All right, then let's move to... Thank you very much for everybody who's in here that wants to stay, you can, but are there any commission items that you'd like to share today that can't win the money? Commissioner McCarty.
I just have one. Sean and I are participating in an inside Polk County Public Schools program that's led by leadership, Art, Polk Vision, and Leadership Hall. And I just want to say historically, from being the executive director of Polk Vision, that Lakeland has not always been as participatory as probably the rest of the municipalities around the county, and I genuinely appreciate that Sean's involved because I will always be involved, and as a commissioner, I think that's really important, that Lakeland is a good partner across the county, but I really appreciate that you're there. He's always contributing and doing a really good job, and I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm enjoying the class, and we're learning a lot about some of the needs and some of the good things that are also provided through our school system.
And children are widgets.
And to your point, we have a responsibility to...
We do. We need to be a good neighbor. I appreciate the leadership in that.
Good.
I guess I'm sure someone will say it again, but the parade was wonderful last night. You know, it was nice to ride on the float again, and my wife had a wonderful time speaking with your wife the whole time, and that was great. But, you know, I, as we look at the news, and I think we talked about this last year, you know, with all of the idiocracy of people driving into crowds and stuff like that, how our city has learned from that, and we've positioned all of these, you know, 60,000-pound, you know, dump trucks and stuff around there, but yet it's off the site. So, you know, you're driving around, and you're not feeling like you're in, you know, in a war zone, but we just noticed that a lot as we were going, and it was, it was just, to be able to be there and to know that somebody is thinking about things that nobody else is thinking about is just encouraging.
That's the team, yeah. And plus, if you drive through downtown today, you'd go, what parade?
Yeah, that's true.
It's incredible. Well-attended, I thought, and that just, it was neat, so. People love that parade, and the weather was great. Other comments? If anyone... Yes, Commissioner Man.
Well, I just kind of want to echo Commissioner Music. It was interesting, you know, just talking to some people yesterday during the day and just, you know, the holidays, bringing up some loss and grief and being difficult for people, you know, first holidays without a loved one or not having as many loved ones as you once had in the holidays. And so I was thinking about that this morning when I was coming and just looking into the eyes of the children along the street and seeing the joy in their eyes and seeing everyone so full of joy and smiles, and even had a little incident, you know, on my way to the office today that, you know, could steal your joy, and certainly all of us have that. And the most exciting thing for me is the kickoff of a parade for our city so early in the holiday season is to remind us that joy doesn't mean you don't have sad things and bad things and terrible things happening in your life every day. People are fighting cancer, people are in rough relationships, and yet it doesn't mean that you're fake if you smile or if you join in and celebrating. And so I just, last night was such a reminder for me personally to say, we all have stuff that is terrible, and yet we all have things that we can celebrate, and we just, we should, we owe it to each other as a city and as a community to smile and to rejoice and to be joyful in any small ways that we can. And it was a beautiful, beautiful night last night with our city after surviving, you know, a global pandemic and so many years of kind of being away from each other and suffering and mitigating that. It just, I hope that we can ride on that joy, you know, off to the end of the year.
Joy is contentment above circumstances, and that's great. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Basically ditto to everything that's been said. It was interesting. I know your family, your daughter had a real good time. I think she had a good time. She was a real, a real treat. I mean, she was having a big time. She was a...